Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. We're going to go ahead and start our regular council meeting. And we will start with an invocation from Chaplain Paul Ellis from Casa Grande Police Department. And for those of you that are willing and able, if you want to please stand for that as well as the Pledge of Allegiance.
Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, colleagues and friends, would you bow with me in prayer? As I pray in my faith tradition, would you pray along with me in yours? Heavenly Father, as we begin the business of this evening, we pause to say thank you. Thank you for the many blessings you have bestowed upon the city and us as individuals. Thank you for the freedom that we enjoy in this country. Thank you for your protection. Thank you for providing for our needs and thank you for our family and friends that make up this great community. We pray your blessing as the business is conducted on behalf of the citizens of Casa Grande. It is a sacred trust that our leaders do not take lightly. We pray for your wisdom to be granted to these who have been elected to serve and lead this great city. We also pray for your blessing upon all the individuals who serve this community and keep this city operating so efficiently. We remember our first responders tonight and pray for their protection as they watch over our city to keep us safe. Protect them from all evil and we pray no harm will come upon them. May your blessing rest upon this great city of Casa Grande and all who call this their home. We pray this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. Thank you, Chaplain, and thank you, Matt. Okay, first item on the agenda are the minutes. Oh, roll call. Sorry about that. It wasn't the first. Adriana, if you can please accept for the record that all the council members are here.
So noted.
Okay, now the minutes.
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I move for approval of the minutes of the City Council Regular Meeting of August 18th, 2025. And except for the record, the minutes of the Community Services Advisory Board Meeting of July 25th, 2025, as presented.
Second. Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, if we can get all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. The claims next on the agenda.
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I move that we approve the list of claims for August 13th, 2025 through August 26th, 2025.
Oh yeah, that should be 2025.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Adriana, you got that clarification there? Okay. Is there any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the meeting agenda approval. Larry, is there any changes to the meeting agenda?
Mayor Fitzgibbons, there are no changes this evening.
Okay, so if we can get a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, special presentations. Adriana. So again, welcome to Charles Gaston and police recruit Damian Guerrero. Please stay safe. Okay, so we have a presentation from Chaplain Paul Ellis.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council, for allowing me these few minutes. It is my distinct honor to serve as the Casa Grande Lead Chaplain for the last four and a half years. And you may be thinking, what is a police chaplain and what does a police chaplain do? Let me just take a few minutes to answer that question. We all know that law enforcement officers regularly encounter fatal accidents, violent crimes and domestic abuse. And as a result of that, these critical incidents, police officers often find themselves a secondary victims of the incidences that they call themselves too. Yet their resulting stress and oftentimes depression and even post-traumatic stress often goes untreated due to the stigma of seeking outside support. The very independence, fortitude and self-reliance that make a soul fit for a law enforcement duty for service renders them more susceptible to the long-term effects. And that's where law enforcement chaplains come in and that's what the need is all about. To serve those who serve and to protect those who protect. This is the charge of a police chaplain. Chaplaincy is crucial and it's uncomplicated. The call of a chaplaincy is simple: to see the good. As volunteers who exist outside the command structure yet hold themselves accountable to agency leadership, chaplains are uniquely positioned to lead by example. In every situation, in every crisis, in every moment, chaplains are there solely to support the chaplains or the officers without judgment. To normalize positivity and resiliency to our departments and to remember of the goodness in humanity that can be overlooked in these obscure times. The International Conference of Police Chaplains, of which I have been a member for over 40 years, is a global family of men and women dedicated to support and serve those on the front lines. Our ministry of presence is proactive by walking alongside the officers through critical incidents, offering guidance to their families and advocating wellness practices that remove the stigma associated with seeking and receiving the help. We serve those who think of themselves only in the service that they give. And often, we are the only ones that they will receive that help from. In July of this year, I was sworn in as the President of the International Conference of Police Chaplains, more commonly known as ICPC. The organization was established in 1973 in Washington, D.C. by the Department of Justice as a result of the death of a federal agent. The need was recognized for dedicated police chaplains who were well-trained and could respond with consistency. To that end, a group of chaplains from across America were called to Washington to develop a program with the original oversight of the Department of Justice. The goal was to bring consistency in training and credentialing to those who serve chaplains across our nation. One of those original six chaplains was our late Chaplain Bob Cornelius from here in Casa Grande, who served until his death almost two years ago. The International Conference of Police Chaplains now has over 3,600 members, serving departments and agencies in the United States as well as around the world. A year ago, when I was President-elect of ICPC, I approached the Casa Grande leadership to inquire about the possibility and the opportunity for Casa Grande Police Department to allow ICPC to have office space to conduct our corporate business and to call it home. The leadership was so gracious in welcoming ICPC to their corporate office, as their corporate office, and making ICPC the corporate office for the International Conference of Police Chaplains. Tonight, I would like to ask for a formal opportunity to thank you, Madam Mayor, to thank the members of the City Council, to thank our city manager and to thank our police chief for extending such a warm and gracious hospitality to ICPC, to the chaplains around the world, providing compassionate care and support of our first responders. As the new President of ICPC, I will be meeting with government leaders in the United States and as well as foreign heads of state over the next few months. And as President, I have been given 10 challenge coins, which have deep significance with military and first responders. And tonight, Madam Mayor, as a token of my appreciation to you and this city, I would like to present to you, on behalf of over the 3,600 members that we have, my first of the presidential coins that I present to the heads of state. And with your permission, I would also like to present to each one of the council my own personal challenge coin as the President of the International Conference of Police Chaplains. Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You know, and I just wanted to say, Paul, literally, I don't think they could get a better person to represent the police officers nationwide. to represent, um, the police officers nationwide. So, um, thank you for all you do and for representing our city. And of course, I know, you know, we've worked together for many years on the Faith Alliance Board, and so I know your passion and commitment to, to this, and so thank you for your, for just the time that you're gonna spend all over the country. So, um, you know, again, we appreciate it. Thank you for being here tonight. Okay, um, next item on the agenda, we have a presentation and discussion relating to the topics presented at the, um, League of Arizona Cities and Towns Conference. And so I think we just put this on the regular agenda just so we can have discussion. Is that correct? So, um, for those of you that aren't aware, every year, there's a conference where all the cities and towns from across Arizona get together, and there are different sessions and speakers, um, meetings, um, you know, for, for all elected officials, uh, across the country as well as city staff. So this year, five, five members, um, Councilmember Romo, Councilmember Dugan, Councilmember Edwards, and Councilmember, um, Herman and I, along with our Youth Commission and several of our staff members, were able to attend this great conference. So in the conference, there were sessions that, you know, just, you know, that all of our cities and towns are facing that were very informative and educational. There were sessions on power and energy, um, engagement, um, water, housing, healthcare, workforce, education, AI, and those are just a few of the topics. So there was also several guest speakers that were very informative, and I think we all found that one of the common threads in a lot of the speakers was community engagement and trust. And so it's so, um, nice to see all these faces in the audience today, you know, to make sure that we're getting feedback and interacting with, um, our community. So we heard that time and time in a, in our presentation. We also had a showcase of cities where all the cities just highlight their city and what they're all about, and we always do very well. We're a popular booth because we, you know, support all the different businesses and, and provide products that are made in Casa Grande. And one of the biggest products was Lucid Motors, and so we had, this year, they had their, their police vehicle, patrol vehicle, that was displayed at our booth. And so people were super excited when we told them that that was made right here in the city of Casa Grande. I don't know if we're gonna go with the police vehicles anytime soon, um, but I know there was a lot of interest from a lot of the other cities. So that was nice. We also provided products from Abbott Labs, you know, their Pedialyte and their, um, I think they're, Frito-Lay, we had Frito-Lay chips. Anthony was definitely loving giving away those. Frito-Lay trip, um, chips, and then Sun Life also, um, passed out a lot of their, um, you know, coffee mugs and things like that. So thank you to Adriana and all the staff for putting that on. So, um, I'll pause with that and then just have the council members, if you guys wanna just give some of the highlights that you, um, saw and learned, you know, from the sessions and everything that you saw at the, at the conference. So would you wanna start with you, Sean?
Yeah, sure. Uh, it was my first one, first one going to the League of Cities, and I did not know what to expect. But I gotta tell you, it was real eye-opening to meet with other people from other cities around the state. Ninety-one, learn ninety-one cities in the state, potentially gonna be ninety-two, once they add Santana in there. But, uh, great learning experience. I sat in some conferences on, uh, AI and how artificial intelligence is gonna be soon very, very enveloped in all of our lives, including on the city level. And that was really interesting. Um, the whole thing was a positive experience for me. I really enjoyed attending, so.
Thank you.
Yes, it was very, very good, uh, meaning, um, once again, I believe we learned more by listening to what's going on in other cities as well, too. And, uh, a lot of the things that we're having issues with, they're having issues with as well. So there was always a common denominator there. But one thing I always love going to, uh, the state of the towns and cities is that Casa Grande is very recognized throughout the whole thing. A lot of people bring up Casa Grande and the things we got going on with the, the businesses here. And I'm just so proud, you know, born and raised here, and I say this a lot, and I'm gonna keep saying it, and I love Casa Grande, I love my hometown. And it just makes me proud when we're around different cities throughout our state that we're still getting recognized. Um, where Phoenix still recognizes us, you know, and, uh, that's, it's so, it's, it's very rewarding just to, to hear people talk about their city in a good way. And so, but I did get a chance to do, go to different other, uh, functions from the policy post, legislative updates, or the league debate teams, um, all above housing solutions. Just trying to gain more information for myself to make wise choices and decisions for our city. The big beautiful bill. I went to that one, which talks about Medicare, future healthcare impacts on our cities and towns, as well as the new talent playbook, innovative workforce solutions, as well as ballot influence, understanding the role of special interests in today's, uh, referendums. Reading the tea leaves, which is, eh, every year I go to this one. Um, so you get a lot of good information about what's going on all around the world, um, as well as in-state. And then the last one is Funding the Future: New Reality in Grants and Assisted Funding is the classes that I went to as, as we're all able to go to different classes and things, and sometimes we're in the same classes at the same time, um, but there's a lot of information given, and I really love going to, uh, the cities and towns of the League of Arizona.
Thank you, thank you.
I wanna thank you all for coming to hear our presentation on League of Cities tonight. Finally.
Yes, it's nice to have him here.
It's, it's a great program that we get to participate in, and, and the networking is so important. Um, because, uh, to echo just a little bit, all the other cities and towns are having a lot of the similar problems that we have at different scales, mind you, but we can help each other find solutions and we learn. I got to go to, uh, um, well, to start off, uh, to kick off the conference, our own mayor, she's not gonna tell you, but our own Mayor Lisa Fitzgibbon spoke at a seminar for everybody about our outreach and our, our community engagement that she's been starting here in our town, and I got more compliments from people that said, hey, she did a great job at that, and it's great what you guys are doing there, so. That, that made us more proud because people do know who Casa Grande, the mayor of Phoenix was on the panel, um, along with Congressman Stanton that I went to one. And she said, boy, isn't it great coming up to I-ten, having it nice and wide, and I said, hello, we're from Casa Grande. It's not quite, she goes, you're right, there's still a section left. But Congressman Stanton, to that point, I said, what about the rural communities where we're trying to build our, uh, this overpass, over courts, and we've been putting in year after year after year for raise grants, rise grants, whatever the grant, tiger grant, whatever it's called that year. And I said, how, you know, he's not, he doesn't really represent our area, but he's on the Transportation Committee, and he said, basically said, call me. And he goes, by the way, Casa Grande's not real rural. I went to Lucid, so people know who we are here in Casa Grande, thanks to the hard work and the community that we are here. Power was one of the big recurring themes, of course. And I learned this, this blew my mind. APS, just APS spends a million dollars a day on infrastructure in, in Arizona. Like building new lines, repairing lines, they were doing it today down in Thornton, but a million dollars a day they spend just on infrastructure. And they use about eighty, they make eighty-two hundred megawatts today, and they predict that to double every ten years from here on out, and it hasn't grown since two thousand ten, but now it's doubling, uh, due to data centers a lot. And they have over twenty thousand megawatts in requests that they're, they can't do it because they said we're not gonna impact ratepayers with those requests. And just the transformers they need to do data centers and big things, like big factories, it takes them at least five years from the time they order that to get those parts. So it's just mind-blowing to learn how all this stuff works and how it affects our communities. Um, the water, of course, another big one, went to the CAP. And, uh, in case you didn't know, Pinal County takes the brunt of all the cuts of the CAP, but we do what we can, and, and, you know, people are proud of us. We're very responsible here for doing what we can, and we're coming back with, with solutions, with our farmers, with everything else. And we're called the Lower Basin States here, and Upper Basin like Wyoming and Colorado, all those guys up there aren't taking their, their cuts, so. We're trying to, they're working on solution every day to help us with that and get the infrastructure so that we can, you know, so we can have the water that we need. And one interesting thing that they said is, you know, we have this system of delivery. It won't, it will take more than just CAP water from there. We can put other water sources into it to deliver it to our communities. So I thought that was interesting. Mining playing a big part in our community now with Ivanhoe and Cactus Mine. And they're concentrating on securing supplies in the U.S., and Arizona's really good to work with for mines because our regulations are pretty favorable to mining. And interestingly enough, I go into this panel and I see a gentleman from FNF Construction, a huge multinational construction company, and I graduated high school with them from here in Casa Grande, so just another, another thing right there that you know. And, um, I won't bore you with anything else, but it's really good for government nerds like us to really get into it and see. Oh, I did learn about, uh, strategic plan which we're undergoing, and I did find out we are in a very good place on our strategic plan, so I was proud of that as well. Where other cities are, don't know where they're going, and we're, we're in our second iteration of ours at this point now, so. Anyway, I just wanna thank the people for doing it, and, and, uh, and then the, the booth, the staff setup, and people cannot believe that we make Frito chips, Abbott Labs, and cars in Casa Grande. They're like, seriously? I go, yeah, we make all this stuff right there. And we gave away these little battery-powered fans, and I saw at the ASU game, Senator Shope and his wife had those fans. So, yeah, it's a great thing we get to do, and it's very beneficial.
Thank you, Matt. And how about you, Becca?
I was very grateful for the opportunity to attend. This was my first one. And, um, I learned a lot about housing development and water, and how to understand and meet the needs of our community. I also appreciated meeting other people in other councils and hearing their perspective and understanding some of the issues that, that they're going through that are very similar to what we're seeing in our community. And just to echo what, um, Councilman Edward said, is just, I'm really proud to live in Casa Grande and to be able to serve.
Thank you. So, and as you all can see, it's definitely a busy time. Um, you know, we definitely go and, um, you know, are, are booked from day in, until evening in all these different sessions, so. Um, and not only the sessions, but the networking is also critical. You know, just meeting all the other council members and of course, me with them as, as mayor, being with one of my, one of ninety-one, or I'm one of ninety-one mayors in this, in the state of Arizona. And, um, I was elected, um, to serve as the, on the Executive Committee, so for the League, Arizona League of Cities and Towns, so I'll be one of twenty-five mayors that will be on that council again. So it'll be nice to represent the city there. There is, um, for those of you that know, and I know I've shared this information with, um, with Larry, that the Executive Director position is open for the Arizona League of Cities and Towns. So if anyone knows of anyone, you know, they're, the, the position is posted on their website, so that's open until September twelfth for the Director of the League. We also had a Mayor's Roundtable on Education. Education is becoming a big part in a lot of the cities and towns, even though we don't manage the, um, budgets for education in our community, but it's something that we all know is important, that we all need to be involved in. And we are happy because this has als, always been, not always, but probably the last eight years has been part of our strategic plan as far as incorporating educational goals into our roles and what we do here as a city. So that was nice, working with all the, um, other cities and the mayors. Also, we have a Coalition for Protecting Arizona's Lifeline when it comes to water. So I was, um, on that panel, and we do have a video that's gonna be going out. I think, I don't know when we're gonna show it, Larry, I think it might be on our website or coming up on the website, um, here in the city of Casa Grande. I am on that coalition on protecting Arizona's lifeline, and that's with, um, water and the Colorado River. So, um, just, that's just a little bit of a highlight of the league. I appreciate everyone going, appreciate all the staff and all the time that they put into to, to, um, getting all of our, you know, booth and everything. The accommodations all set for us, so thank you very much. But I think that, that's probably good. Anything else? Any other comments, questions?
Thank you, staff.
Okay, thank you. So we'll move on to the Consent Agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion and one roll-call vote of the council. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or member of the public so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence of the agenda. Is there anything that anyone would like to remove from the consent agenda? Any council members, any staff? Anyone from the public?
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I would move for approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Um, is there any other further question? Okay, if we can get a roll-call vote, please. Adriana.
Councilmember Romo?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Pedalen?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, public comments. I do have several speaker cards, but it looks like the majority of the speaker cards are going to, are for item number L-one. So if you are here to speak on that, we'll wait until that part of the agenda. So this is just if there's anyone else that would like to address the City Council at this time, and if you can please limit your comments to three minutes. The first person I have is, um, Lee Metcalf. And Lee, if you can give us your address, and of course, um, if you can limit your comments to three minutes, that would be great.
Name's Leander Metcalf, sixteen thirty-four East Evelyn Street, here in Casa Grande. Madam Mayor and members of the council, I wanna thank you for the opportunity to speak with y'all today. I'm here to share my concerns regarding Metronet's recent work in our neighborhood. From the very first day of their construction, there was no communication with us as property owners about what was going to be done or how it would impact our property. This is troubling because even Metronet's own guidelines, which I've provided to you, state that property owners should be informed of the methods and areas of disturbance before work begins. This simply did not happen. Only after we approached the project manager, when the work was already, or nearly finished for that day, did we have the chance to raise several health, safety, and placement concerns. However, he dismissed those concerns, insisting that the equipment was placed properly. And after we contacted the city engineers and inspectors, we discovered that the permits had actually not been followed. When pressed, the project manager went so far as to say that if we wanted the splitter box, which they had located on our property relocated, we would have to pay thousands ourselves. He also suggested that Metronet was being nice to restore the property at all, and that the easement was not even really ours, claims that do not align with Arizona statutes. It was only through the involvement of the city engineer David and the city inspector Francisco that this issue became resolved. And I do wanna take the time at this moment to publicly commend both of them for standing up for the citizens and ensuring that this box would be moved and making sure that Metronet as a company followed their proper permitting. Their work exemplifies the kind of accountability that we as citizens expect. I think most of us here in Casa Grande welcome faster and more reliable internet, but this must not come at the cost of respect for property owners, health and safety, or the integrity of city permits. An easement allows use of property. It does not erase ownership, nor does it relieve companies of their responsibilities. I wanna thank you again, Madam Mayor and council members, for your time and allowing me to bring these concerns forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Metcalf. And we can't comment on your, um, remarks, but you can als, always get with our Deputy City Manager after, and he can talk to you about that. Thank you. Anyone else? Public comments? Oh, that's okay, Barbara. If you can give us your name and address, please.
My name is Barbara Sundust. My address is twelve seventy-three East Cordova Avenue, Casa Grande, Arizona. Um, and again, I'm here, um, to talk about the unhoused situation. There is a committee, um, and we are having a meeting tomorrow, Unsheltered Persons Action Committee. And we did send out surveys, which, um, I didn't get to go out to the street, but I, um, went to, um, I did Laundry Love this past Wednesday, and so I asked for the people that are there, if they were in an unhoused situation, if they would fill out the survey. So I have twenty-one surveys that they did, and I will return those tomorrow to the committee. But I, there are a few things I might, I wanna mention about it because most of the time, housing, so, uh, this is from one of the members, housing is very important before any other services is rendered, so that's what I think. Can't give services to people who are, don't have a permanent place, some kind of a place. Um, and so she said, I'm sixty-five and it's very hard to live on the streets. Never was homeless until I came to Arizona, that it's not the fault of Arizona. My husband of thirty-two years passed away four years ago, and since then, she's, you know, she just hasn't had a place, which is a situation for lots of people. Really, and here's another person, really need a place for me and my family. A lot of places don't want to rent to you if you've had a recent eviction, and so then I, I asked her why was she evicted. She was evicted because she lost her job, which has happened to a lot of people nowadays, that they don't have their job, and so now she have, and she has a family. So there, I mean, most of the people are saying she has a family. So, there, I mean, most of the people are saying here, "I live, I live anywhere, they will let me stay. Help me get out of the streets." So, again, I'm just begging that we, especially for the unhoused, the tenting people, if we could find a place for them. I know if you've looked in Star, if you've paid attention, in Tucson, they're setting up a place. It's called Star Village. It's for 25, I think it's women. When I read it, it sounded like it was women. And they would have staff members there at night. And it does, it's not just the city. It's city property and the city's involved. But other people, other organizations and service organizations are helping, which would happen here. The churches in Casa Grande, St. Vincent de Paul, they would help if they, if there was a place for these people to be. So, again, I'm going to say that place, it's off of, it's on treacle between 6th and 5th. It's, it would be perfect. They could still come to Laundry Love. They could still go to, to get food at Seeds of Hope. And, you know, I mean, and there's empty buildings right next to it. So, I don't know if it's city property or not. Yeah, I know. I want to just end with this last sentence. I just was reading Face, looking on Facebook, and this came up. And so, I thought, "Oh, it's very apropos." "The measure of a society is found in how they treat their weakest and most helpless citizens." And that was said by Jimmy Carter, who, obviously, one of my heroes, because he really, even after his presidency, served to people, poor and needy people. So, thanks for listening again.
Thank you, Barbara.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Sure. If you can please give us your name and address, please.
My name is Thomas Vincent. I live at 1427 East Anna Drive in Ironwood Commons. I'm here today because I'm the, my wife's the president of the HOA in Ironwood Commons, and I'm the president of the landscape committee. And like the gentleman was talking about earlier, we also have a lot of problem with Metronet. Things aren't being put back properly the way they were found. Our HOA meetings, we have a lot of complaints. And they're saying, "Why didn't you do something?" I say, "Well, go to your city council meetings." Well, I got elected to do that because I got so tired of hearing everybody complain about this. But to make the long story short, we've received close to $2,000 back in damages that Metronet has done to our water lines. They have wasted hundreds of gallons of water in our neighborhood. We had to pay for that bill. But they did fix what they damaged. But they're continuing to damage in the neighborhood. We have 349 homes, homeowners. Just last week, they had a big truck run up on the rocks so the person could sit in shade while they worked, and they broke another water line. We fixed that one. Just because we fixed it, our crew was there. There's two big holes in the road that they have patched around the roundabout. They started coming unpatched. I got the supervisors. I said, "Look, these are getting worse. We're hitting them with the tires. It was smooth and nice before you came in." They fixed it. Now, we're at that level again. And they just don't work with us very well. It's like termites. Everywhere they go, there's something wrong. And being a landscape committee president, they have made me work overtime for the last three months. And it made our neighborhood a living hell, basically. But I just wanted to address that, if the city could help with that, because they're really doing damage to our community. And things aren't being left the way they were. So, I'll break with that. Thank you.
Thank, thank you for coming. Hopefully, your neighbors are watching you on TV, so they... Thank you. And if you would like to talk to Stephen Weaver afterwards, and, you know, if you want to get, get some information, he can get information from you too, our deputy manager. Thank you. Any, anyone else? Okay. We'll go ahead and move on to item number J1. And that is, yeah, there's no contracts. J1 is the reappointment of Richard O'Neill and David Fitzgibbons to the Industrial Development Authority. And I don't see either one of them here. I don't think so. So, I guess they're not here, but if we can get a motion to consider the reappointments.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying "Aye."
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next is item J2, and that's the appointment of Gerald Singleton to the Board of Appeals. And Gerald, I don't, I don't know if Gerald is here. Is he here today? But thank you to Gerald for, for applying to that. So, if we can also get a motion to approve that appointment.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying "Aye."
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And I did want to comment, you know, a lot of our boards and commissions are, those, the appointments are up right now. So, I've had a lot of people in interviews on these. And there's, there are a lot of people that have been applying and interested. So, I just want to thank the community for their interest in serving. And it's just, it's definitely a difficult decision. You know, we're trying to do our best to appoint the right person and have a different variety on these boards and commissions. But I did want to thank all of those who that have, have applied and, and are applying. We have a couple more for planning and zoning, our community service, and our public safety advisory board. Those interviews are coming up. So, a lot, a lot more people. So, thank you for all those that have been interested. Okay, item number K1. Who is that? Richard?
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. Tonight, where the staff is asking for you to consider approving a resolution number 50807, supporting a foreign trade zone designation for the proposed logistics facility located at northwest corner of Eddington Road and Clayton Road. This is the NRS Logios facility. They're, they're looking for a foreign trade zone designation. At this point, what they're trying to do is we have to collect letters of support from all the taxing entities, which city council is one of those. And it goes into an application that they forward on to the federal government to make a designation, to designate their site as a subzone of Phoenix Foreign Trade Zone 75. And what that is, this is the first kind of step. This application goes in, and they'll take their whole property, and the federal government will take a look at it and go, "Okay, this portion of your property can be designated, can be activated for foreign trade zone, subzone." And so, what that does, it gives them some benefits from a, instead of having to go through the customs at Port of Long Beach, they can actually come in and go through the customs there on site. And so, there's a lot of benefits that go along with that for them, including the customs being more, I guess, it's easier for them to go through customs. They will get some certain, certain benefits related to piecemeal or final piece, costs for the taxing, for ultimately the taxing that goes on to those, those products that they do. In addition to that, there's property tax. And property tax adjustment, as explained in there, is a reduction from 15 and a half percent down to 5%. Now, what that means for us is that, from the city council standpoint, from the city's standpoint, our budget is roughly 7% of property tax. So, it's, it is a reduction in our property tax. But what we get for that is a very international company that's bringing good quality jobs to the community. It's going to generate over time more, more property tax, more sales tax, more jobs, and ultimately, working with our students to create another pipeline for ability to grow our own and employ our own here. And so, but just a little bit more about the foreign trade zone itself. There's a lot of things that they have to do. It's not just the designation. It's all good. It's open doors and stuff like that. It's the customs they're going to have to do. They have to, it's, it's administered by the foreign trade zone advisor up in Phoenix, Denise Yanez. And so, they have to do, they have to pay an annual administrative cost. But along with that, they also do have to increase the security and reporting and documentation of everything that goes into that designated area to go through customs. It is customs that come in and make sure that they bliss off on it. Say, "Yes, you meet all the standards and qualifications," and you, and then they can receive the benefits. So, it's not, it's not just a simple process that anybody goes through. It's, it's actually a costly application that goes through. And it could take up to a year to get approval from the federal government, who knows these days. But at this time, staff, and we're asking for your support to approve a letter, a resolution in support for this, for this project. I'll stand by to answer any questions you might have.
Questions? Sure.
Yeah. What kind of traffic is that going to bring? I mean, is it, is it going to be all semis coming out of the port? Or are they going to use our rail lines? Or how's that coming in?
They're going to be in ISO containers. ISO, because they're, they're actually geared towards the chemical companies. So, it's going to be ISO containers, and they'll be on semi trucks mainly that come in here. They're not going to generate hundreds and hundreds of semi trucks a day. And so, there will be some truck, truck, truck traffic out there. But it, the jobs are about 90 jobs. And so, you're not going to see hundreds. And it's not going to be a Walmart distribution. It's not going to be a...
So, what's, what's the footprint on that? I mean, how many acres?
It's about 69,000 for the facility itself. And it's got outside storage and some additional storage area on the site. It's on a 40 acre parcel. It's right across the street from, from Kohler.
Richard, is, are the customs officers actually US customs? Or do they use a contractor of some sort?
I am not an expert on this, but they have to meet custom border portrayal, border protection, custom standards. It's got to be federal. It's, it's basically has to meet federal standards.
Okay.
Whether they contract out or they actually have order customs there, I think that they contract, that those contractors have to make, have to meet certain criteria.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Don't quote me on that.
Richard, how, how many companies do we have in our industrial area that are, that have this?
Well, there, we have, thank you for pop quizzing me here on, but basically, NRS would be one, Lucid definitely one, Kohler, Ching Chung has gone through one. We've had another interest by one of the other chemical companies looking at it, Abbott Labs. So, we have a number of them. And we'll get more because of the thing. And important things, like we're losing tax, we're actually gaining company that's going to actually drive more revenue to the community. So, it is definitely one of those things. And one of the, the selling points that a lot of companies are looking for, they'll come in and say, "Do you, are you in a foreign trade zone?" And we can answer, "Yes." And "Do you support foreign trade zone applications?" And so, that is what a lot of these companies are taking a look at when they make their decision. So, if you take a look at that, like a Lucid and some of these other companies that we've, we've attracted because that is one of the tools that we have.
But it's an extensive process they have to go through. So, it's really us just supporting it and saying that we have the...
Absolutely. And there's about 12 taxing entities that we have to have letters of support from. So, we have high school, elementary school, Cavett, Central Arizona Project have all signed, all provided letters of support. The county is actually just passed their letters of support from the library district, the flood district, the county itself. And then CAC will be acting on it on the 16th.
Okay.
So, we have overwhelming support. So, we respectfully request your support for today.
Any other questions, comments? Okay. If we can get a resolution number, please.
Resolution number 5807, a resolution of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, supporting a foreign trade zone designation for the proposed logistic facility located at the northwest corner of Eddington Road and Clayton Road, Casa Grande, Arizona, and authorizing the city manager to take other actions and execute such other documents.
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I move that with through resolution number 5807 as presented. Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, Adriana, if we can get a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Rummel?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Pidell?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, item K2. Kevin?
Thank you. Staff recommends that the Marion City Council award a contract with Sunland Asphalt and Construction LLC for the city's pavement maintenance project. This will include Burris Road, Chuchu Road, and Hannah Road for an amount not to exceed $575,000, which includes a $29,901 city contingency. Staff is requesting authorization to use a City of Glendale contract number C25-0494 to procure this contract. And this will be to perform microseal surfacing treatment for the existing chip seal roads that I just previously mentioned. That was Burris Road, Chuchu Road, and Hannah Road. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, comments? Sure, Brett.
I was looking at their proposal. It was dated end of June. They said that it was 30 days that they'd hold their price. So, are they still going to withhold, hold their price where it was at?
Yes.
Since it is beyond that date? Okay. And then I saw that they had some additional terms and conditions included in their proposal. Taking it, Brett's reviewed those and is okay with those?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, that's all I have.
Any other questions, comments?
No.
Okay. So, if we can get a resolution number, please?
Resolution number 5808, a resolution of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a proposal from Sunland Asphalt and Construction LLC for the pavement maintenance project, authorizing the expenditure of public funds, and authorizing the execution of a contract with or purchase order to Sunland Asphalt and Construction LLC.
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I move approval of resolution number 5808 as presented. Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, Adriana, if we can get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Rummel?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Pidell?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, item K3. Kevin?
Thank you. Another pavement preservation project. Staff is recommending that the Marion City Council authorize a contract with Sunland Asphalt and Construction LLC to pave the required five miles of dirt road in order to meet our PM10 response plan. If council may recall, our PM10 particulate matter, that's the air quality concerns that we have with ADQ and air quality. And this is our, part of our requirements to help reduce that PM10 particulate matter in the air. So, we're, we're taking our gravel roads, turning them into paved roads, and that meets our requirements. We're asking permission to use a City of Glendale job order contract number C25-0494. And this project will include the paving of Overfield Road, Early Road, Rough Cut Road, and Grogan Road. And we went from having, having to do one mile each year to this increased number of five miles each year. So, that's going to burn up most of our gravel roads pretty quick in the coming years, as long as we continue to have the funds available. And this project is estimated to come in at right around $1,148,634. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, comments? Sure.
Same questions as before, Kevin. Hold their price, and we're good with all the terms and conditions added on.
Yes.
Okay.
So, five miles, one point, about 1.15 million dollars, right? Right? That's what it comes out to?
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Okay, if we can get a resolution number, please?
Resolution number 5809, a resolution of the council of the city Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a bid from Sunland Asphalt and Construction LLC for the PM10 response plan, authorizing the expenditure of public funds, and authorizing execution of a contract with or purchase order to Sunland Asphalt and Construction LLC.
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I would move for approval of resolution number 5809 as presented.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, Adriana, if we can get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Rummel?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Pidell?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Item K4. Kevin?
Yeah, staff recommends that the Marion City Council award a contract with Cactus Asphalt LLC for the partial reconstruction of the CG Lake subdivision pavement project in an amount not to exceed 1.5 million dollars, which includes a, a very large city-owned contingency of $610,498. And I'll explain why that contingency here in just a moment. Staff is requesting authorization to use an existing Pennell County One Government Procurement Alliance contract number 22-15P-01 to procure this contract. The work will take place in the CG Lake subdivision. And the reason for the large contingency, we're going to be removing the asphalt. And typically, we'll go in and we'll do core samples in a And typically, we'll go in and we'll do core samples in a subdivision to determine what that subgrade looks like so that we know if we need to plan on having soil cement as part of the process. But in this subdivision, because of the way the pavement has reacted over time, we don't see the types of defects that typically result in bad subgrades. So we have a good idea that the subgrade is in good shape. But we want a contingency in case we get that asphalt up and we find problems, we're able to move forward quickly and get this project completed in a timely manner and not impact the residents in a negative way for a prolonged period of time. So we're hoping we need to not use that contingency, but we want it in place. So just wanted to explain that. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Sure. Any question?
Oh, yeah. Matt just sits there and stares at me. The soil cement based stabilization, I always enjoy the fact that you have contingency money in there. I'm a big believer in it. I just want to make sure that the method that we're looking at is the most cost effective method. I mean, are we going to, would we actually review that subgrade and see if there's an alternative that may be more cost effective? Either remove and replace or?
Yeah, I mean, the contract does give us opportunities. The one that we're asking to use, other types of treatments. But that's the one that we have found or had the most success with in other subdivisions where we've had failed subgrades. The one that comes to mind is, I can't remember now. Thank you, Casa Grande. Yes. So yes, we're able to make changes on the fly if we need to.
So Kevin, can you explain, because I know some of the council members are newer, how you decide this subdivision over another subdivision? When we were determining where to allocate these funds?
Sure. Actually, the first call I received on this subdivision was probably a year after I started here, and that was 19 years ago. And they wanted us to replace their asphalt. But we, shortly after that is when we first implemented our pavement management program. So that's where we go out and we assess all of our pavements. And we assign a pavement condition. And that's a rating number between zero, no road at all, to a perfect road, which is 100. So it's rated from zero to 100. And when you hit certain points in that pavement life, like 80%, you're going to do some type of a seal coat, like a spray paint, new asphalt on top. But when you get into that 70 to 60% PCI, the score, you're going to be doing something more aggressive like a chip seal or a slurry seal. And in this case, the pavement is in that 50 range right now. And that requires a much more aggressive or partial replacement. And we call it a partial replacement because we're only doing the asphalt, even though the subgrade is part of that pavement. If we were doing a full replacement, we would be also redoing that subgrade. So the soil cement is a method to hopefully Band-Aid that poor subgrade soil to hopefully get it, make it strong enough to put new asphalt on it and have a good asphalt life. But each pavement section is part of that system. And we evaluate that on a yearly basis. The software that we use goes through a process. And it basically spits out projects that it thinks we should do based on those pavement conditions. And then we go out and do field verifications and then look at adjacencies to other projects so that we, you know, build economies of scale. And then we come up with our pavement management program each year. So that's how that one finally got to the list of needing that replacement.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Any other questions, comments? Okay, so let's see. If we can get a resolution number, please.
Resolution number 5810. A resolution of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a proposal from Cactus Transport to LLC DBA Cactus Asphalt for the partial pavement reconstruction for Casa Grande Lake subdivision, authorizing expenditure of public funds, and authorizing execution of a contract with or purchase order to Cactus Asphalt.
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I move for approval of resolution number 5810 as presented.
Second. Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, if we can get a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Romo?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember B. Dillon?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, item L one. We have a public hearing. This might be why everyone is here today. I'm not sure, but we'll see. L one, so if we, let's see, that's going to be, is that you, James?
Yes.
James.
Good evening, mayor, members of council. So this presentation actually covers both items L one and L two. I understand that you'll have to vote on them separately, but they're joined at the hip. So I'll go through the presentation. But of course, if you have questions about them separated out, I'd be happy to do that afterwards. But the request in front of you this evening pertains to a minor general plan amendment. That's item L one. And item L two is a zone change, both pertaining to Casa Grande Mountain Park. So a little bit of background. It is the area that you see on the map that is shaded in blue is the official boundaries as they exist today of Casa Grande Mountain Park. It's approximately 1,350 acres. It's owned by the city and entirely within the Casa Grande city limits. An additional 800 acres just to the west of the mountain park is within Pinell County, and it's owned by the state. But it's assessed generally available for users of Casa Grande Mountain Park. If you're out there, you might not realize that you're in one area versus the other. These combined is 2,150 acres designated within our general plan as open space. There are some additional acres that I've highlighted there in orange that are used and accessed by the public and in some areas even maintained by the city. But they are not state, county, or city owned. These properties might be developed privately in the future unless in the future acquired by the city at a future time for open space purposes. It's in the orange area where the trailheads just south of I eight are located. It might be surprising to know that the parking areas are not on city property, but they're allowed, the owners have allowed the public to park there. So the area in question this evening is approximately 304 acres of land that is owned by the city but not officially part of the park. And it sits outside of the area designated as open space by the general plan. And until recently, this acreage was reserved as a part of a contract to sell to a private owner. This land would in turn probably be sold by that owner to a developer to develop it into a variety of uses. It's currently titled or entitled as a PAD zone, part of the larger Casa Grande Mountain Ranch Dreamport Villages South planned area development that you see highlighted in yellow. So what the request would do this evening would be two things. One, it would designate that 304.5 acres as open space, general plan designation. And it would also rezone that 304 acres into urban ranch, the same zoning as the rest of the Casa Grande Mountain open space. The photo on the left is a general idea of the acreage in question. It's actually the location of the Erika Trailhead. Local volunteers, namely from a local mountain bike group, help volunteer to maintain the trails that already exist on this acreage. And the city generally maintains this area as well. But it does sit within this PAD that you see on the right. Out of that 304.5 acres, 96 acres are designated for low density residential. So that would mean it would allow development up to about four and a half dwelling units per acre. And then 92.4 acres within that area are actually designated as open space. But the idea is if this were to develop as entitled, it would probably be allowed to be public open space, but it would, it would serve primarily the residents within that PAD. And then there are 70 acres entitled for very low density residential within that area. So that would be about one dwelling unit per acre. And then there's some acreage for medium density residential development, up to 12 dwelling units per acre. There's an area towards the northeast corner designated for commercial. And then just west of that, there's about seven acres designated for a campus tech park. If city council is to vote tonight, both on the general plan amendment to open space and a rezoned urban ranch, this area would be severed from the PAD and it would become urban ranch zoned. When considering the criteria for general plan amendments, this is considered minor because it's going to a more restrictive general plan designation. It's currently within the neighborhood's general plan land use designation per our general plan, which does support a variety of residential development, primarily low density residential. But it does support some areas of higher density and neighborhood scale commercial. Of course, with the general plan amendment, it would go to open space, which is predominantly for preservation purposes. The open space land use designation does allow limited development such as park shelters, water storage, cell towers to take advantage of the grade in that area. However, it isn't conducive or appropriate to support other types of commercial or residential development. The primary, the primary general plan criteria that I want to discuss with regard to the minor amendment is goal O four, expanded city network of open spaces, park, and trails. The associated action steps that would speak to this change is that we are to target properties adjacent to Casa Grande Mountain for purchase for open space expansion. The good news is we already own it, so it doesn't involve purchasing. But this is a very ideal property to incorporate into the existing Casa Grande Mountain Park network. Action step O dash four 11 is to continue to acquire land to develop a scenic corridor around Casa Grande by connecting large parks and greenways with multi-use trails. The thing is, is there's already trails within that acreage. And so it would be a loss if it were to ultimately be sold for redevelopment. Because even though there are nodes within there designated for open space, a lot of the trail system would, throughout there, would ultimately have to be reconfigured. And then the last action step is to increase recreational resources by maximizing the multipurpose uses of existing open spaces. The city has their Erika Road Trailhead there. There is opportunity to, in the future, if budget allows for the Parks Department, to upgrade that, again, as budget allows for certain upgrades, such as perhaps paving that lot, adding restroom amenities, et cetera. With the minor general plan amendment, it would result in a 10% increase in the open space general plan designation of properties within the city. But by comparison, what we'd be losing in the neighborhoods general plan category is less than 1%. With regard to the zone change, there's three criteria that needs to be evaluated when contemplating changes of zoning. The three criteria all have to do with the general plan, which I've discussed earlier in the presentation. We do feel that the, that there is an opportunity and a community need for the change in zoning. Regarding the public notification efforts, there was a sign posted at the Erika Trailhead, and it was updated to reflect a council date change. There was notification mail to owners of property within 1,500 feet of the subject area and publication in the Casa Grande Dispatch. The city has received multiple letters of report, of support. Many of them have been provided to you in your agenda packet. I understand that some didn't quite make it and they were sent earlier today. We did receive one call from an owner of property thinking that their property was being rezoned, but I think they were just misunderstanding the notification. One call was against the change citing that the city needs to stop growing and to focus on fixing the sewer and roadway system. I feel that the city can accomplish two things, preserve the open space and also tackle infrastructure. There was also a representative of the primary owner of the Casa Grande Mountain Park PAD, the acreage outside of this 304 acres, who would like the city to reconsider the general plan amendment and the zone change. They contend that that 92 acres that is to be preserved within those 304 acres could be highly amenitized for the public while still offering prime real estate for high-end development. And he would like to pursue a different direction whereby the city could reconsider. At its July 3, 2025 meeting, Planning Commission did forward a recommendation to city council to approve the minor general plan amendment from neighborhoods to open space and also to approve the zone change from a portion of Casa Grande Mountain Ranch Dreamport Villages Casa Grande South PAD to urban ranch. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, James. I'll go ahead and see if any questions, comments right now. I know it's a public hearing, so we'll open it up. But any questions or comments first from the council?
I'll wait to hear them.
Okay. Okay, then we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Is it okay, Brett? Do I have to do them individually? So do L one and then L two separate?
Yeah, technically, because they were posted that way, you're going to have to do two separate public hearings.
Okay.
But people will speak on either one. They're both kind of relevant to each other.
Right, okay.
But technically, we'll have to open one, close, vote on the general plan. Because if the general plan doesn't change, then, you know, the rezoning we can't do.
Okay, and then go on to the next one. Okay, so we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. I'll start with the speaker cards that I have. And you can come up and if you can give us your name and address. And if you can really try to limit your comments to three minutes. I know we're willing to hear everyone who wants to speak. But if there's someone that made a comment that you just agree with, if you're just going to repeat everything they say, if you wanted to say, hey, I agree with so and so, you know, that would be helpful too. But of course, we want to hear all of your comments. So I'll go ahead and start with Debbie, is it Mum? Mummy? Okay, Debbie Mummy. Sorry, Debbie. And again, if you can give us your name once again and then address.
Good evening. My name is Debbie Mummy. My address is 9916 West Arvada out of Arizona City. And thank you for allowing us to come and speak this evening on this subject. I represent the Junior High School Mountain Bike Race Team. And we, Casa Grande Mountain is our diamond in the rough. That's where we train our athletes. We've been training there since 2013. So some of our athletes are Marines now. So they've gone on to be wonderful leaders, and so we're very proud of them. The area that we have, we utilize Casa Grande Mountain. Right now, we're on the south side. We start Erika Trailhead. But we encompass the full mountain, kind of not on the west side, but the east side and north and south. There's nothing better, and especially this area right there. When you're riding through there at night and you see a silver fox or you see a javelina, it's beautiful. I mean, so to. I mean, so to and with all the concrete coming in, to be able to preserve that land that people can get away, they can hike, they can bike, they can just go out and get away from the stresses of life, Cas Grande Mountain is the place to go. And this coming weekend, our first race will be in Flagstaff. Some of our coaches and our athletes are here. They race with all the other high school junior highs from around the state. And I always say, if you can conquer Cas Grande Mountain, you can ride anywhere's. And so because it is a diamond in the rough. And so thank you so much, but I I I just hope and pray that you guys consider just bringing it bringing it in and not allowing more concrete out there, because that's that's pretty ugly. So, thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. How about some of those athletes? Who are those athletes that are here today? Can you stand up? All right, well, thank you. Thanks for coming. At all ages, right? No, thank you for coming. Okay, I let's see, L, I just have L on this one, so if L1 is when when you want to speak, Bonita Vincent.
My name is Bonita Vincent, and I live at 2250 East Erika Road, which sort of parallels what or perpendicular to West Erika Road, so I don't know how the roads got named. But I agree with Debbie about keeping the open space open, because the wildlife, the people that I see up there hiking, I hike up there, and it's a wonderful place to go and to keep it open. Thank you.
Thank you. And Eric Wilke.
Mayor and city council members, thank you for the opportunity. I'm Eric Wilke. I live at 9105 North Paso Palaveri Road in Cas Grande. Cas Grande Mountain is a gem, and it's our our city's natural resource. It can't be parallel, as other communities would really like to have such a feature. And it's an elevation. That's what makes it special. We have land, we have a lot of land we can develop into recreational land, but there's none with that type of elevation and and beauty, really. So I think if as we think about aspiring to be a, you know, a great town and a great city, preserving that resource is important. Some of the other benefits that I think by preserving that land and keeping it and making it part of the bigger park, it enhances not only, you know, property values nearby, but it enhances property values of our whole city, because people think about the recreational opportunities when they make a choice to locate their businesses or come to live in that community. It is a it's an opportunity for tourism and recreation. We heard about the mountain bikers. There's other teams that come to to ride our mountain. There's people that come from all over the state. It's on it's on the recreational maps of places that are exceptional to ride. And so we attract other people, and they bring economic benefit by by their coming to ride our our trails. It preserves natural space in a natural environment that's unique and is quite diverse. You could even say it improves our water quality and air quality. Those open spaces are kind of sanctuaries, and they regulate climate, and that's a significant benefit. One other thing by enhancing your parks in your cities is it provides a mental health benefit. It's something we seemingly have a lot of stress and a lot of pressure on our on our citizens, and giving them open spaces to go out and be active and and decompress is very important. So I would encourage the council to think about how this preservation would enhance our city and continue to to make it a great place to live. Thank you.
Thank you. So I have Matthew Don, but it says L2. Matthew, do you want to speak now, or do you want to wait to the second part?
I have my second.
Oh, second, thank you. Appreciate it. And we'll we'll put your your speaker card in the the notes, and so your address will be reflected, and everything will be in the minutes of the note. Okay, so that's all the speaker cards I have. Is there anyone else that would like to adjust the council? Okay, if we can start right here, the gentleman right here. If you could give your name and address, please.
Mayor, council members, my name is Jack Gilmore. Gilmore Planning and Landscape Architecture. I'm here representing Casa Grande Mountain Ranch. My client, George Chazzy, is over here in the corner with his son, Mike. First of all, we are not opposed to open space trail system. Actually, that's what got George excited about the initial opportunity to acquire this property many several decades ago. He saw the potential benefit of developing the master plan community with these connections into the trail system, you know, those mountains. So the master plan, as as Jim says, calls for 90 acres of open space, and it was our vision back then that should this, at the time, moving to develop, we would have a chance to negotiate a relationship with the Parks Department and planning to develop that open space network, because we want that connection to the mountains. And George made it very clear, we were doing master plan, that the trail network had to go east and south into the master plan community, because we want that interrelationship. So we are very much in support of everything we've heard tonight in terms of the trail system. The interest in these enthusiasts for the biking is is gonna help the project. I think our request right tonight is not to necessarily oppose the zoning, just the totality of the open space. So we're asking for council consideration to give us six months to continue negotiations with three national carriers, users, I should say, that do have a serious interest in this project. Getting our arms around the complexity of the infrastructure, access, utilities, water, which you are well aware of, sewer, and adjusting to the market is a challenge for any of these national users. I think it's important, and we believe it's important, that if this can stay in the future as part of the project, the cost of those improvements, not just for the trail that we're talking about, but the trail heads, which would include the shelters, the restrooms, the parking, all those amenities, that can stay as a developer-funded expense versus a city-funded expense. We think that would be a huge benefit to these enthusiasts, to the project and the city. So that's our request, not that we're opposed, I say, to the trail system, open space, just the totality of it, and to give our team six more months to negotiate this relationship with these users. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, you can give us your name and address. We all probably know you, but.
I know. I'm Marsha Heineman, and my address is 8667 South Lamb Road. So I'm right across the street from the park. And I'm happy to see so many of my former students here. It's like old times.
Can you pull the microphone down a little bit, Marsha?
You're just calling me short.
There you go.
I just have, like, questions, and I know you can't answer them, but it's things to think about. And teaching environmental education makes me wonder about the water use, because right now, I don't know what the acres are gonna be used for, is that one-acre lots, is that big housing development with apartments and, you know, multiple-use kind of thing like that? So I don't know how many people would be needing water. I know you're saying that there'll still be some open spaces over there, but would they be open to the public? Or because it's a a new housing development, would the rest of us be shut out? So I'm worried about the water, the electricity. I don't know which company services that area. I know my daughter lives just on the other side of I-8, and she's on San Carlos, and they've lost power multiple times just recently, excuse me, from the storms. So I don't know if it's that, if they can withstand the strain of extra houses. The landscaping, the desert natural beauty is very important to me, not only supporting the wildlife that lives there, but just the fact that it's, you know, I don't want to see anything happen to saguaros that are over there, or any, really, any of the natural plants. So if something were to go in over there, I would hope that there would not be any grass or anything that's not natural to the desert itself. I'm wondering about the roads right now. The main road into the park is Erika, and that's, you know, by the truck stop. And most days, you can get in, but going back out, it's very difficult to get out using that. So sometimes people have to come down Lamb and go out and around, which is our area. And so that could, if there's a lot of houses over there, that could involve a lot more traffic in our neighborhood that we're not used to, and we enjoy the peace and quiet out there. So I'm concerned with that. And then the the amount of grocery stores we have in the town, you know, there's nothing out on that end of town, and when I go to the grocery store, Walmart, any of those, there's several shelves that are empty now that when I'm looking for something. So I'm concerned about that and whether the schools can handle the amount of people if it's, you know, if there's a lot of children in that area, because some of the schools are already, there's no availability for certain grades. I looked that up. I haven't seen this year's, but last year's, they were hurting for having more students. So those are the kind of things. And then just the amount of noise and pollution brought in by construction that could go on for years out in that area, especially with only the couple of roads into that neighborhood. So if you just take those things into consideration, I'm with everybody else that spoke about keeping it just as a natural park, because I think that draws people into the community as well. Like, when you go to Phoenix, there's several mountain parks up there, and that's the thing that everybody's out doing and appreciating, because the rest is all too crowded. So please take those into consideration when you make your decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Marsha. Okay, next, sure.
My name is Bert Whalen, 1244 East Judy. This is Liv. More or less, just want to be.
Oh, the the microphone, if you can put it up a little bit. There you go.
Yeah, sorry.
Thank you.
Yeah, a few things, right? So as far as future development, I think we see a lot of businesses that could benefit from a bit more foot traffic and heavier density in the core part of town, instead of being all the way out here in the outskirts. Furthermore, the town simply does not have enough outlets for the youth. There's not enough healthy outlets, there's not enough to do. There's not enough healthy outlets for the kids to do, they're gonna be doing other things. More so, I think it was very nice that he highlighted some of the benefits, some of the key features that he would want to sell future development on. But instead of having those benefit the few, we should have it benefit everybody in the community. So I hope that's what we would come to a general consensus about. And I heard a lot of "I thinks," "I believe," but we all know what we want and what we want to see this town look like, and so I don't think we need another six months to try and decide or discover what our feelings are. So I hopefully can come to a decision on that tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Good night. Okay, yes, if you can give us your name and address.
Get the microphone down to the short person. So, good evening, Mayor Fitzgibbons and Council. I appreciate the opportunity tonight to speak to you. My name is Kent Taylor, 1203 East Laurel Drive, Cas Grande, Arizona, and a proud Cas Grande resident for 30-plus years. I'm here to urge you to support the effort to protect and to preserve 300 additional acres for Cas Grande Mountain Park. And before I get into that, I'd like to thank staff, city staff, for being proactive and for bringing these items, the general plan and the zoning changes to council in a timely manner, and for their professionalism as we continue to pester them regarding this property. The development of Cas Grande Mountain Park was a true community-based effort. City staff, AmeriCorps crews, and thousands of hours of volunteer labor made this park a reality. You now have the unique opportunity to protect and preserve an additional 300 acres for our signature natural resource while also expanding outdoor recreation opportunities for our residents and visitors. As staff highlighted tonight, this land is owned by the city of Cas Grande. So while there are some here tonight who wish to see this land sold for additional residential development, I would argue that time has passed. There are some things in life that just aren't for sale. This is one of them. As I stated in my recent letter to you, I believe the decision you make on this issue will be a legacy decision. I urge you to leave a legacy of protection and preservation of Cas Grande Mountain Park by approving these two items. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else? Okay, here, hold on, we have one more. This way. Name and address, if you could.
Yes, ma'am. My name is Joseph Wood, 1648 East Joel Drive here in Cas Grande. As you can see, I am a member of the Youth on Track Organization. I got into it by accident. My son caught the bug last year, started competing last year. My younger daughter saw him race his first race and caught on, and I was worried about her safety, so I rode along, and here I am, a coach, and fell in love with not just riding bikes, but with the community of mountain bike riders. You know, my wife and I looked at property a couple of years ago when we were looking to buy a house, and we we seriously looked at CG Mountain area, there's a lot of developments down there. And the thing that made us say no was the Sunland Gin exit traffic area. I know that was commented, but I wanted to highlight, in my life, that was an absolute no. It's a safety risk. So I find it very difficult to believe that somebody with lots of wealth would choose to buy a house there with that kind of disaster happening over on that intersection. I'll just leave that said and unsaid. Second of all, housing and recreation don't often mix well. Residents like their privacy, and in my experience, whenever you start trying to intermix the the recreation-type stuff, there's complaints about dust, there's complaints about noise, there's complaints about whatever. Homeowners will find anything that they want to complain about if they feel the need, and maybe that's not something that we'd have to consider over the next two years. But what about five, 10, 15, 20 years down the line, when the homeowners have more power than those in the recreation community? I would just like to comment that Debbie Mummy and her husband Phil have been incredible stewards of CG Mountain and the trails. Most people don't know, I never knew, that the reason that those trails were so beautiful is because they literally sit out there in the heat with rakes, and they make those things look great. It's inspired me, I know it's inspired many other people, to be good stewards of our community and our environment, and I would not want to see that diminished at all. I think that's that's a great inspiration for our youth. I've also seen many trails over the last year in the state of Arizona, and because I've been able to ride probably a dozen different trails, I've realized how much of a gem we have here in Cas Grande. It's like, it's right in our backyard. It is the best hiking, it is the best mountain bike riding, and I would hate to see that diminished by a few residents, really, at the end of the day. And lastly, I just wanted to say this, I encourage the city not to just approve this measure and bring this into the open space, but I would really encourage and strongly admonish the city to do more. That entire area around Cas Grande Mountain, I feel, needs to be protected. And it doesn't need to be protected just for our just for our community, but I'm talking about the radius of 100 miles of people who like to hike, who like to bike ride, people from Tucson. Yes, they have Mount Lemon, maybe they want something different. I met somebody up in northern Arizona who saw the CG Mountain and was like, I heard there's trails there. I said, yeah, it's amazing, right? He's like, I'm gonna have to check that out. We could bring in a lot of of recreation communities into CG Mountain more than we have right now, if we just really focused on making that place as good as it possibly could. So, thank you.
Thank you. Was there someone else? Did you have your hand? Yeah.
Hello, my name's Nathan Stuland. I live at 1624 East Joel Drive. Much like Mr. Wood, my son, over here, one of the athletes of the mountain bike team, got into mountain bike racing, and I sat on the couch, got a little bit fatter, a little bit weaker, till eventually he pulled me out there. And so now I've been biking since January, and much like Mr. Wood, I've been around the state, ridden a lot of trails around the state, and this is a gem. I know that term has been thrown out a lot today, but it is a gem. It's fantastic, it's challenging, it's scenic, it's fun, and we run into some interesting creatures out there. Secondly, young people in Cas Grande, and I believe the gentleman with with. young people in Casa Grande, and I believe the gentleman with, with the, with the small child up here mentioned this. Young people in Casa Grande, my children included, have often said, there's nothing to do. Unfortunately, if we don't protect this area, I feel like that complaint is validated. And so I would hope that we could keep this space the way it is. And I appreciate your time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Thank you very much. My name is Nancy Wood, 513 Speckle Road. And I just have spent a lot of time with the wildlife here in Casa Grande area with the burrowing owls and such. But that's partly because I grew up here in Arizona. I've been here all my life. And I've experienced the value like South Mountain, like Pepito Park, like Camelback Mountain. And when you live in a, a community and you're youth and you're growing up, these outdoor spaces are super, super important and just give a value to the growth of our youth so that they have the experience of the exercise and the, the outdoors and have the, the ability to do that. And to have it so close to our city and it will just give value to every resident here. And it gives value to the city. And I've seen that in the areas where Casa Grande, Tempe and such. The, the actual cities themselves, the, the value that it gave to the city just to have those open spaces that they preserved, that Casa Grande can have the same thing. It'll give the value to all of us, not just a few people. If you sell these to single family homes and whatever, then you're just benefiting just a few people. If you keep this, you preserve it for all of us here. And then tourism and other people will come and we get to meet more people and it gives more value. So I just preserve as much as you can. You already own it. Don't let that go and build on it and give it more value. And our youth will prosper from having the opportunity. So, thank you very much. And I hope you improve the open spaces. We need it. One, one last thing is that, you know, we have a tendency to want to have multifamily housing, smaller lots. Everybody's more condensed. When you do that, we need that because we have more people, but they need that open space. It gives health and value. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Is there anyone else? Couple people. How about, oh, sure. Go ahead. You give us your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Melissa Williams. Sorry.
Can you bring it down a little bit? The microphone there.
I have a little anxiety, so pardon me.
That's okay.
I want to be a voice for him. My older three, they've, they have gotten the awesome opportunity to race with Youth on Track. This year is his first year. Today, when, oh, well, he got to before under one of the other leagues. Or, yeah, in one of the other leagues, but same team. When I told him about this meeting earlier today, he had his own phrase. He said, keep our mountain a no home zone. He loves to get to ride. He loves to get to go out there. We love going out and seeing the mountain and I don't get to ride. My health doesn't let me. But I love getting to know that he's out there and getting to see and experience and I get to watch that sunset while he's doing it. Oh, and I get to cook for the team. That's per his. But I thank you very much for considering this and letting us have this opportunity.
Thank you. And thank you for coming. Did you want to say something? No? Okay. Well, thank you for coming. We appreciate it. Okay, there's a couple more hands, I think, somewhere. Back there. Okay, there. You want to pull the microphone down?
Yeah. Reach this. Diana Curtis, 1864 East Birch Street, Casa Grande. And I represent CG Rambler's. We're a hiking club. And we hike at CG Mountain every week, every Sunday morning. So if anyone wants to join us, everyone is welcome. And through the years, I can't tell you the number of middle school students and college students that I have taken to CG Mountain to hike. And it's always been very beneficial. I remember one student said to me that his mother had remarried. He didn't get along well with the stepm- stepfather. So instead of staying home on a Saturday to argue with him, he decided to come hiking with us. So being over there is very, very important. Yesterday I was out walking and I was remembering how I selected Casa Grande to, to move to. And I was first looking at Tucson. But after spending a day with a real estate agent, I realized it was just as congested as Northern Virginia. And I was trying to get out of that rat race. So I said, is there a quiet suburb you can send me to? And she said, go up and take a look at Casa Grande. So I did and I loved what I saw. It had everything I needed and it was quiet and comfy and it had a mountain. And I would love to keep Casa Grande like it is. I don't want to see it get like Phoenix or Tucson and be a rat race. It's nice to grow, but you need to pay attention to your infrastructure, your water resources and make sure you can take care of everyone. But please save Casa Grande Mountain. It is a gem, as everyone has said. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think there was someone here. Sure.
Thank you, Council. Thank you, community. My heart is racing. I said I wouldn't speak. My name is Tamara Zantilli. I live at 8544 South Lamb Road. The mountain is my backyard, my front yard. And my children have gone through the school system. I'm an educator in the school system for over 25 years. And my son is in Alaska right now, climbing a mountain because of CG Mountain. It builds dreams. And our former council, I'm sorry, our former mayor, sat with him when he received an award. As my youngest one has just received an award, come on us and they made the same comment about, please come back to this community. After you've gone and climbed the mountains and built the dreams and fulfilled your dreams and made the money, come back to Casa Grande. My son's coming back from Alaska, hopefully in a couple of weeks. He will take his two younger brothers. They will hike Casa Grande Mountain because that's where they were raised. That built their dreams. Please keep the spirit of our youth, of our community, of our children. I've taught in the middle schools. I've taught in the high schools. We have amazing community here. We want our children to come back. We want them to enjoy it, to love it, to, to go, go far, go wide, make the money, but come home. Come back to your parents and just hang out at the mountain with us, watch the sunsets. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else? Oh, hand here in the green. Sure.
So we always say, Dave, make trip on the wonderful city of Casa Grande, right? I live at 9686 North Penworth, out by Indian Hills, by the old trail that we used to have that was bought by a developer years ago and they've never done anything with it. It's, it sits lined off by barbed wire fence, at least the quad riding and illegal off-road riding is stopped, but I used to be able to leave for my driveway and go ride for an hour, two hours. Now we don't have that. All we have is one location. But growing up in Phoenix and what I call South Phoenix is the concrete jungle, right? And then spending a year or two in Tucson now, because I haul cars, I drive back and forth and I attend to Phoenix, after spending 25 years of policing in the community. The I-10 is dangerous, as Councilman Matt Herman said, so driving to South Mountain is not fun anymore on a Saturday morning, on a Sunday morning, on a Wednesday morning. It's not fun. We have to stay here and commuting back and forth is dangerous as heck in I-10. And why should I go to Phoenix and spend my money at some other business, at some other restaurant, when I can go here and Casa Grande ride, have fun, sweat, crash, get some stitches, come back? And then go down to the local coffee shop somewhere, right? Where Casa Grande Mountain, even though it may be minor, it's a revenue generator. Cause since COVID, during COVID, that place was packed. People were out there getting out and then coming in and spending their money, which is a great thing. Even though it's minute and small, it was great. So compared to Tucson and South Phoenix, we have it great. I'm glad that I raised my kids here because both my kids have been on the team and I've been a coach, but I'm such a busybody. It's hard to manage a, a schedule. Scott Tracy's kids are on it. Some of us have spent a lot of time. I think there was a time that, Enrique is 20 now. When he was 13, he was afraid to go off the pavement until, in the dirt, until Debbie said, let's push that bike a little farther and go off in the rocks and the dirt. So think about it, that environment has developed kids' minds because both of mine, my youngest just turned 18 and I will say cycling was a great thing for them. Cause when you're in policing, I was never at home. Cause technically my address wasn't my home address. It was 520 North Marshall, because I spent most of my life there. But I will say Casa Grande's great. We have it a lot better than Phoenix and Tucson. I've been in Tucson and I will tell you, some of the homeless encampments and the other things and stolen cars, burned out cars, it's destroyed their washes, their desert area. It's destroyed it where you can't even walk down the street with getting in a conflict with somebody. Here we don't have that problem. We have a little bit more control of our environment. Our city leaders have done a lot to make changes. And I will tell you, studying people and cultures and cities is a great thing. We need to keep what we have here now. Keep it sustainable and keep it fun for everybody. I imagine we can always bend a little bit for people to make things happen, but you have to think about the people. You have to think about the community and the benefits that it gives us. So I will say, even after policing, probably the reason my heart hasn't jumped out of my chest yet, and I think Chief Huddleston can admit, is because you have to stay fit. And if you don't stay fit, we die very, very young after policing. So I'm hoping I can hit 80 in Casa Grande. I think I will. But I will say, we need to, we need to maintain what we have there. Your cops use it, your city employees use it. It's a nice open space. And that's all we have. There isn't anything else. Most communities don't have that. So on a short note, because I could sit here and talk all day about fitness and riding.
We, we know. We know.
I could sit here all day. But thanks for the time. I went over by a couple of seconds, but it's okay, right? So other than that, thank you, but please take it into consideration. It's a great place for kids. That's what we have to think about because our youth are important. But thank you very much and enjoy the rest of your evening.
Thank you. Okay. And then the gentleman here in the front, would you like to come up?
Hello, my name is Todd Stuland. I live at 1624 East Joel Drive. And I'm the kid that uses the mountain that everyone's been talking about. It's awesome. I hope you guys keep it. I agree with everything that everyone else has said. And I just wanted to say, you know, hey, the kids, we like it too.
All right.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. More? Is there any, anyone else? Oh, one more. Back here.
Hi, my name is Chris Ferguson. I live at 9185 West Century Drive in Arizona City. I actually just came to support Diana. I wasn't going to speak, but listening to some of these people talking about, you know, they've grown up here and it's been part of their life. Well, I didn't. I, I just moved here in January. But my grandparents decided to be snowbirds here 30 years ago. And so we came down every year. We visited them. I brought my children. My children grew up here. Every year we went out to Casa Grande Mountain. Other than seeing my grandparents who let my kids have M&amp;Ms in their cereal, Casa Grande Mountain was the highlight of our trip every year. And it was one of the things that drew me to come back. I've been wanting to move here for 30 years now and I finally got it done. And it's also because of Casa Grande Mountain that I actually made friends after I moved here. So, I mean, it's great for the people who've been here forever, but it, it's really a wonderful asset for those of us that are fairly new to the community. And I suggest that you hold on to that tightly. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Paul Heineman. I live at 8667 South Lamb Road. I was born and raised in this town. Something that I've always been proud of is Casa Grande Mountain. It has a C on it and a G on it, which stands for Casa Grande. It's our mountain. Let's take care of it.
Thank you. I know, it's been long. Sorry about that, the long meeting.
Oh, God. My name is Bobby Joe Kaker. I was born and raised there. Left here during the Vietnam War. Made it back 50 years later. As a kid, we used to, we, I grew up off, off of Pirat Road when it was a dirt road. We used to go to CG Mountain quite a bit and down before all the houses were there. There was a, down in the ravine, there used to be a lot of verandas and stuff that we used to picnic on. And to my surprise, I saw the, the houses and the verandas were gone and so that, that was a disappointment. I have a few questions. First of all, is the size of the lots, the sizes of the homes that will be going on? How will they enter and exit the, the area? Do they plan on making a, a new exit between Pirat Road and Interstate 8 and 10 where they meet off of Interstate 8? Or are they gonna route them down to Sunland Gin Road? Because right now, the only way to get in there is basically off of Orico Road. And I do support the, the open space. I wouldn't, and, and to me, I mean, I, I kind of consider myself being the last house right next to the mountain, basically. Because I live at 2250 East Orico Road. There's abundance of wildlife. We got the coyotes. I've even had a peacock. It's just amazing the different things you see. The other thing is, I remember as a kid, the high school cross-country team used to run CG Mountain. There's a lot of memories. I, I think it would be a mistake changing it to a residential type community, even though it would, to my advantage, at my age, it would increase my, my, the, my, my property value, but I agree with everybody else. Leave it as, as, as open. I enjoy the, the, the peace and the serenity of the mountain. That's, that's basically all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else? Did we get everyone? All right. So I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. We're still on L1. So hopefully you don't all get up and speak again at the next one, L2, but if you want it, that's fine. Okay, so, close the public hearing. So are there any questions, comments from the council at this point? No questions, comments? Matt, go ahead.
I've got some comments. I mean, we've heard a lot of good things tonight and, and our city has changed a lot in 30 years. And we value different things now. But the mountain, we keep talking about youth. But a lot of old people use it too. Hiking, biking, trail running, you know, stuff like that. And also, my dad's 80 years old and he still hikes out there. So, I mean, it's for the whole community. But I want to say that the chassis, Mr. Chassis Junior and Senior, we've worked with them for a long time and they've been nothing but, but kind and have a great vision. But, you know, times are changing and we have all these people here. And, and once you get houses, I see it in other cities. You know, Scottsdale, Phoenix, where you try to access trails through houses as soon as the housing development starts trying to shut other people out of the area. to shut other people out of the area, so we can kind of avoid that. We still own it. We work with them. Another question is, Mr. Chassis has helped design an overpass there off of the 8, Hennessy Road. Yeah, so there will be one someday. But tourism's a big one. I'm on the tourism committee, helped start that at the Chamber, and I've been pushing them. I talked to Mr. Wallen at the bike shop there about pushing them to have more events here again, like we did, you know, because it does, it's a draw for our community, and it's a jewel. And, you know, it's just, everyone says jewel, and it really is. But the elevation is one thing that we don't have, because I flat-ride bikes mostly, because I prefer that. But, you know, another thing is, my daughter lived in Indiana for a while, and I would hike up there a lot and send pictures. And her friends in Indiana was like, wow, he's hiking that mountain. How far is that? She's like, it's 10 minutes from the house, you know? So that's another benefit we have here in the community. So I'm thinking that, you know, we're hearing what people are saying. Again, all due respect to the Chassis, they're great people. But I think we're hearing what people are saying, and it's, you know, it really is a treasure for our city.
Sure. Go ahead, Bob.
I just want to tell everybody, thank you for coming tonight. I love this. We love grassroots efforts and support. Makes our job easier. The message that you've given us tonight, I think I can speak for everybody. We have heard you loud and clear. So. Thank you so much for supporting this and coming down to tell us. Thank you.
No, and I agree with my fellow council members here. You know, thank you. You know, we really do appreciate you taking the time. It's already almost 9 o'clock at night, past many of your bedtime, probably. But, no, really, that just taking the time, all the emails, for those people that weren't able to attend, we did receive many emails, and if we didn't respond, we try to respond to many of you, but there were so many coming today, I don't think I kept up with them. But thank you for your engagement. And I think, and I think Mr. Heineman said it nicely when you said, you know, it says CG on it, which means it's our mountain. It's ours, you know, mine, yours, everyone here. So I think, you know, we're definitely at a turning point in our community. There's so many changes going on, and it really has been a pleasure working with the Chassis over the years. I think, you know, we were, you know, open to see what the development was going to be. You know, we were patient, we gave extensions, we did our part in hoping, you know, to bring something here, but that time has passed. And I think Kent Taylor said that also, you know, that time has passed. And, again, we're at that point now where we, you know, we know this is a jewel. We understand that, how fortunate we are to have this smart mountain in our neighborhood and in our community. So I think that, for me, you know, as we make decisions moving forward and everything in our community, to me, it's always making sure we have the right development, the right place, at the right time. And I just think this time is, you know, time to preserve and make sure that we keep that open space. This is the city's property. We're not buying property. You know, this is our property, and we can do what we want with it. And so I just appreciate all the input and everything, you know, everyone that has done, you know, so much on the mountain and bringing these young kids and athletes and young and old, everyone here today just definitely opens our eyes to how many people use that and appreciate what it means to everyone here in the city of Casa Grande. So just wanted to make that comment. But if there's any other questions, comments, we'll go ahead, and if you can give us a resolution number, please. Adriana?
Resolution number 5273.39. A resolution of the Council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, adopting a minor amendment to the City of Casa Grande General Plan 2030, as adopted by resolution number 5273, and is previously amended by changing the land use designation from neighborhoods to open space for approximately 304.5 acres of property generally located at approximately 2090 East Arica Road, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I move approval of resolution number 5273.39 as presented.
Second. Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, Adriana, if we can get a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Remo?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember B. Dillon?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Helliston?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, so item L2, and that's going to be James. Or did you pretty much cover everything, or do you need to continue with?
Did you really want me to?
No, not really, but I didn't know. Sorry, James. I didn't know if you needed to say anything more about it.
I'm happy to answer any other follow-up questions, so if you could.
Okay. So questions, comments? So we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. So if anyone would like to speak... Okay, no hands. Good. No. No, if anyone would like to speak, obviously, if there is someone, sure, why don't you please come up? Thank you. And if you can give us your name and address, please.
Okay, it's Benita Vincent at 2250 East Arica Road. And my question is, changing it, is it the same thing we just said is open space?
June.
And you're changing it to urban ranch?
Yes.
Why do you have to change it to urban ranch?
Okay, did you want to clarify that for us, James?
Sure. So the current zoning of the property is what you see on the left. It's a mixture of different approved land uses. And changing the general plan designation is more of a broader map change. That would inform our future decisions, should someone want to change the zoning in the future. We would turn to the general plan designation to guide whether or not the zone change is appropriate. But as it exists, the zoning that you see on the left would stay the same. People would ultimately be able to develop it as currently entitled. It doesn't really change the zoning of the property. It just would affect future zone changes. By changing the zoning to urban ranch, as you see on the right, would mean that it would have the entitlement that the rest of the mountain park has, which is very low-density residential, really wouldn't be able to be developed for low-density residential, because the general plan designation wouldn't support that. But it's just a further step to more specify the specific zoning entitlement for the land.
Thank you for explaining that, because it was very confusing.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anyone else? Okay, we're going to close the public hearing. And any questions, comments?
Nope.
From the council? Anything? Okay. So if we can go ahead and get a ordinance number, please.
Ordinance number 1178.469. An ordinance of the Council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending zoning ordinance number 1178 and its subsequent amendments by changing the zoning from Casa Grande Mountain Ranch, Dreamport Villages, Casa Grande, South Plant Area Development, PAD, to urban ranch, UR, on property generally located at approximately 2090 East Arica Road, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I would move for approval of ordinance number 1178.469 as presented.
Thank you.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, Adriana, if we can get a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Remo?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember B. Dillon?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Helliston?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Okay, thank you. So the last item here is item L3. And if you all want to stay, you can. There's only a couple of things, but you're more than welcome if you have to leave, too. L3, Finance.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, this public hearing is in relation to the report on applying agreed-upon procedures regarding the biennial certification of land use assumptions, infrastructure improvement plan, and development impact fees, commonly referred to as the DIF audit. Arizona Revised Statute 9-463.05 is the statute that gives municipalities the authority to impose development fees to offset costs to the municipality associated with providing necessary public services to a development. Baker Tilly US LLP performed this agreed-upon procedures engagement to assist management with the requirements set forth in Arizona Revised Statute 9-463.05G2 to provide a biennial certified audit of the municipality's land use assumptions, infrastructure improvement plan, and development impact fees. The specific procedures performed are outlined in the report that Baker Tilly issued July 31st, 2025. The report included three findings, two of which related to the calculation of impact fees. Finance worked with the former planning and development director as to the validity of these findings. Any fees that were incorrectly charged have been corrected with the respective developers. In addition, planning and development has worked with Finance, and modifications have been made to the calculation and processing of these fees to help ensure they are accurately calculated in the future. The third finding related to variances in growth projections for new housing units, new non-residential square footage, and total population, as reported in the land use assumptions when compared to actual results. This finding is one that is virtually in every audit or biennial report issued in all cities, as cities will never hit the projected growth numbers exactly, as the development impact fee study indicates. And this is due in large part to the fact that it is a five-year projection based on current population at the time the impact fee study is performed. This public hearing will complete the requirements of ARS 9-463.05.
Okay. Any questions, comments? Okay, I don't think so. So is this just a motion to approve, or how do we?
Yes, although it wasn't listed as a public hearing, but as Ms. Hazler said, you do have to allow the public to comment if they want to.
Oh, okay.
But otherwise, it'll simply be a motion to accept the reports of the audit.
Okay. So any, this is a public hearing. If anyone has any questions regarding this audit? No questions? Close the public hearing? So if we get a motion to approve?
So move. Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, finally, let's see, reports. Any other reports? I know everyone kind of gave the lead, but anything else?
Yeah. Got to go golfing this weekend, take my son out for his birthday, Dave White course, and I got to say, the course looks beautiful for August. Oh, my God. I was just, usually, our courses around here are pretty beat up by the end of summer, and Dave White's looking good and staying strong, so really proud. Nice.
No report.
I just did see a presentation by the county today about the 150th year celebration, and they're having October 4th in Florence at the county seat. So all-day thing, look into it. And it's a good predecessor to the Rotary's Annual Oktoberfest the next weekend on the 11th, which will be downtown Casa Grande.
Downtown Casa Grande.
Yeah, that's it.
Thank you.
No report. Thank you.
No reports.
Okay.
I was able to golf, too, and it does look beautiful. We can talk about our scores later. That's it.
Okay, good. I just wanted to give a quick report on, we've talked a lot about the committee that we have for the Unsheltered Persons Action Committee for the homeless, and we've been meeting, and we have a meeting tomorrow, but we are in the process of trying to identify a piece of property throughout, you know, somewhere in the city, you know, because the ordinance is going into effect on October 1st. And so we are continuing to, or am I not supposed to be talking about it? Okay. Sorry, they're giving me some looks over there. So anyways, we're meeting tomorrow to discuss this, and Barbara, we can talk to you about that later. Mayor's Reading Club, if anyone is interested, there's, we're still getting people to sign up. Please join us. It's on Wednesdays, and it's an hour. So if you're interested, you can go on the city's website and sign up for the Mayor's Reading Club. It's really fun going into the elementary schools and reading to the children. And the Biz Outlook, which is the Chamber Biz Outlook Lunch, is going to be Friday, September 12th, and I will be giving an update, as well as, you won't be speaking, but of course, it's an update from all of us that I will be representing, as well as the city staff, an update on what's going on in the city. So that is on the 12th at the Radisson Hotel. So if you guys have an RSVP, please make sure you do that if you're going to join us. And the 9/11 Day of Service is September 20th at Carmick Knapp Park. So anyone interested in participating in that, please join us in the Day of Service. And that's pretty much it, I think. So, anything else? So we'll go ahead. Okay, guys, we'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you.